This will be the call to order for Salina City Commission meeting this December 10th, 2018. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Awards and proclamations, I believe we have none. We'll move on to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for anyone that would like to address the Commission on Business, not on our agenda today, to do so. If you would like to do that, come forward, please.
Nora Manal, Salina, Kansas.
On that training center, was that a capital improvement project?
Yes.
Should that have been put up for a public vote, taxpayers to vote on it, or you got a resolution that you weaseled around it somehow?
I'm with you till the weaseled around part. We had the budget, we had the authorization, and the City Commission, so far, all they've authorized is the design, and we're in the process of land acquisition, and they'll be taking future action to authorize construction.
Because then it's in the news right now, whether it's fake news, TV news, newspaper. If you raise taxes, you see what's happening in France? You guys are at risk. It's not funny. If we raise taxes, if the land values go down, all indications is that it's happening. A person in this area that tracks this issue says, "You're right. Land values are going down in this country." Another one, is the water at the old airbase cleanable? Science is telling us some of this water will not be cleanable. So maybe you should be directing your money towards future water supplies as a priority issue on some of these other issues you're doing in the city.
We're actually trying to do both as we speak. Scientifically solve the problem and direct our efforts at additional water supply.
Well, I mean, one scientist will tell you one way and one will tell you another. If you lose electricity in the city, have you got a backup plan?
We have an emergency operations plan, and electricity is provided by Westar, or Evergy now.
Have you talked to them? How long can they sustain a backup plan? They cannot sustain it for over so many hours, because I've worked in this area. You can bring in these portable generators, and you can't do it. You say you can route electricity through the generation transmission line? Yeah, you can, but you bring it into, you got to get it into the city. You need to provide a little more security at these substations, because this has happened. We don't know, it's a test run, a random act, or what? A substation went down for 27 days.
In Salina?
No, in the United States. This was a year and a half ago.
Sure. I don't want to get into a prolonged debate with you, Mr. Manal. We do have emergency operations plans, we have an emergency operations center, and we don't plan for a 27-day outage at one location. We plan more broadly than that, and we'll have to react to what problems might arise.
Just one more comment. When you went and paved Ninth Street, all you did was make it a racetrack. It was rough, and it slowed people down. I seen in the paper, people concerned about it. Now we're going faster. Well, why did you pave it? Can you put speed bumps on this new one?
It wouldn't be advisable at that location, no.
Well, just suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Manal. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission?
John Ratsliff, Salina. I wanted to make just a couple quick comments about a more representative city government, maybe some suggestions on ways that we might improve, change how we do things a little bit. And Mr. Manal mentioned the speed limit, which reminds me of an incident. A few years ago, where a neighbor of mine, a couple blocks north, collected signatures from everybody on the three blocks of 700, 800, and 900 block of Highland, and he got all but one of the resident's signatures, brought it to the City Commission several years ago, asking for some traffic calming. And he was unsuccessful, nothing came of that. He was asked, as he told me, "Where are your people?" Well, his people were at work, you know, taking care of their business. He was representing the entire neighborhood, and nothing came of that. So I know when the speed limit got increased all over town, from 25, and in some cases from 20, to 30, some of the crosswalks were taken out, lights were taken out. It made a difference for pedestrians. And as far as I'm aware, one person came from the citizens, and he spoke against raising the speed limit. No one spoke for it from the community, and it passed. So, you know, that's just one issue where, and, you know, that was to the City Commission. I've had conversations on that matter, you know, say like school zones, or speed limits, or things like that with city staff, and, you know, not gotten where I wanted to go, because the City Commission at the time, or the city staff at the time, had a different perspective than I did, as, you know, in the general population. But I wouldn't, I didn't mean to ramble on about that, but that's just an example of where we could look to try to be a more representative government. If we could increase our community engagement, I mentioned something about this last week. We could move meeting times so that the public is, has, it's easier to get to a meeting. We could, and people have suggested doing every other week. Your study sessions are at 2:30, sometimes two. Most people are at work, and those are important meetings. People can't attend, people can't participate for a large part. So move the meeting times. Some of the citizen volunteer boards and commissions are also four. It makes it hard for citizens to volunteer, because their work may prevent them from doing that at 4:00 in the afternoon. So, you know, these suggestions have been made before. Sometimes candidates have campaigned on moving the meeting dates, and it never changes. But we still have that need. Recording the study sessions. Last, the middle of November, there was one I was interested in, but I couldn't come for personal reasons, and there weren't even any minutes on it. It's a public meeting, and there's no minutes. We could create City Commission districts, instead of everybody being at large, which is an historical thing. I'm not aware why it was changed, but I think that might be a good idea to go back to that. Consistent staff and volunteer orientation and continuing education. I really think that's needed. Feedback and appreciation for different things that the volunteers do. And in my opinion, I think we need to end our over-reliance on consultants. When you hire private companies to do the work of the people, sometimes that interferes with the transparency of the process. Plus, I think we're underutilizing some of our very talented and talented citizens that could provide some of these services for much less. How about town halls at neighborhood centers, maybe running a City Commission meeting where the people are, instead of always in this building? Just an idea. I see some special interests that, you know, that want special assessments for growth. And they're pretty successful with the City Commission, have been for a very long time. But, you know, when I see downtown development, which I personally think is great, that sprawl, to me, is at odds. It's like we're, we can't do, we can't pull people away from downtown at the same time that we're trying to pull people into downtown. And remember what people are saying when you give a survey. If they want curbside recycling, let's do it. That's what they want, you know, the majority of the people want that, then I think that you should represent their wishes in doing that. So, I just, you know, that's just kind of, there's so many ideas of ways that we could increase our citizen participation, the satisfaction in the process, and have better government.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission?
Daniel Ikhoff, 2664 Highland. I'd just like to echo, as far as the meetings basically being when people work. I know it's a little bit easier for people with more white-collar type jobs to step away sometimes, people that own their own businesses. It's extremely irritating to hear, "You should have been at the meeting to," you know, when we discuss this, "when I can't just take off work willy-nilly for all these different things." Main reason I actually wanted to talk today was texting and driving. I don't, I guess I don't think the enforcement and maybe penalty we have for that is quite enough. I'd like you guys to consider upping substantially the penalty for texting and driving. Maybe not quite drunk driving, but it is a, it's a serious problem. It's a risk of life, property. Maybe, you know, a few hundred dollars would make people think twice before texting and driving, license revocation, which is something I'd like you guys to consider. I'm irritated about it. I know other young people, other older people are irritated about it. There are a lot of people that aren't happy about it, so I'd just like you to consider that for a future item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ikhoff. Are there others?
Hello, Patrick Harrington, 606 Washington. I wanted to just leave some thoughts and words with you on recycling, but I want to say, waste management, recycling's a small part of it. Dr. Davis, Commissioner Davis, thank you for putting, I think, in the right focus. Are we doing it because we're making money? Are we doing it because it's our responsibility to take care of the land, if you will, that God has given us, and that we come into and pretty much defile, and just drop our trash all over any, everything in sight? There's some biblical quotes that I was going to give to you, if you need that, but I don't feel the Bible manifests that I have to do this. We do it because it's right, and we shouldn't be dumping trash. And Joe, thanks for the focus on plastic and plastic bags. If we don't get a handle on this now, it's going to be a problem here in Salina. And I know that you have a Citizens Advisory Board, and it's supposed to consist of 15 people, two of those being youth from the community of 15 years of age. I think they have a real appreciation of the problem, and what we're going to leave our legacy to them if we don't get on this. And I'll be really disappointed if we discontinue any focus or any projects that involve redirection of waste. I know plastics is a huge problem, but I wanted to add that it's a huge problem because oil is the source of plastics. And do a little research, and you'll see this, but I wanted to mention that if you go to a hamburger stand in Salina, they're real big on nostalgia, and they have pictures of Elvis, and they have pictures of old newspaper articles and such. Shell Oil announced this glorious, wonderful invention for women that petroleum had made possible, and that was the nylon stockings, nylon pantyhose, created from gas, from oil. So that's exactly where plastic comes from. It isn't recyclable as we think, except to reuse it. I think the biggest benefit is going to be to prevent it from coming into the community in the first place, or prevent it from, prevent us, we'll stop using it, we stop buying it. Pretty much everything you buy is packaged in plastic. So trash maintenance, waste control, all of those are things that I think are, we must take advantage of, we must do something about. I also think, and wanted to say, if the city's going to maintain an advisory committee of citizens, that it be serious about what they do. A lot of good people have worked a lot of hours, even though they only have three meetings a year. I think in a, for a project this size, it should be much more time devoted to planning and giving that information back to the city folks that are going to manage this issue for us. But it's a Citizens Advisory Committee that you would be insulting, disrespecting, if you throw away everything they did, because somebody's not going to make money on a recycling project. The city's not going to see a revenue stream out of recycling trash. That's dumb. And that's why we're in this problem in the first place, is because it's a money-maker thing to produce plastic from oil. Everything you can do with it, to dig it out of the earth and then turn it into something that creates problems for us. So there's been a lot of work, and a lot of people, and you folks too, spend a lot of time on it. I just, I can't see throwing it out, just because we don't have a market in China for plastic. That's dumb, and I do not believe for a second that if we send something to China, and they can't do something with it, they throw it in the ocean. There's just no, I wonder what they do with stuff that we send to them. I think it ends up back in a landfill somewhere, and we just paid to send it over to them. So that can't be a reason for not dealing with our plastic. Citizens Advisory Board, I spent some time on when I first moved here, and at that time, the feeling was, is we can make all the recommendations that we want, but the city isn't going to take any of them seriously. So I didn't want to waste my time, and I thought maybe I could be more productive in this, from this podium, just to bring the information to you. So I ask you all to reconsider anything that stops that project, and I would ask you all to allow that board a little bit more freedom, and bless it a little bit more, for this work that they're doing, which is good for everybody. Don't stop them, respect them, give them a little more time. Three meetings a year, three meetings a year is not enough to deal with a problem this size. I'd like to rejoin that, or that board, and Mayor Ryan, you suggested that might be a good place for me. I was disappointed that I was deemed unqualified for something else I had applied for. And I also saw that these are open records, so there, if you care to look into it, you can. But I would like to submit this in an application. I've done this online as well. So may I bring to you?
Well, that, you can give it to the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission? You've expired your time, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, thank you for allowing me.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Commission?
Good afternoon. John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. A couple things I'd like to mention here. One, real quickly, since the two folks before me were talking about, a little bit about recycling, one of the things that I'd like to encourage you to think about, that rather than adding more ordinances and laws to restrict commerce, i.e., not allowing other private businesses to conduct business in the alley because it interrupts our market share, I don't think is an adequate reason to pass a law. And I also would think that I'd be interested to know, if that law were challenged, how well that would stand up. Also, I am pleased that the, we're not going to pass an ordinance to make other private entities provide a service that may cause them to lose money and go out of business. So I'm pleased that we're not doing that. One thing that you may consider, that I had mentioned before, is that you may want to revisit whether or not the city of Salina ought to be in the city, be in the business of collecting garbage. We have a landfill, but if the equipment and all the other things are becoming too expensive and onerous for us to be able to provide those services without setting up laws so that other people can't compete with the city, we may want to consider other avenues, and that is either privatization and/or some sort of request for proposals for private haulers, and establish some sort of fees with that. What I, so that's, that's pretty much on the recycling. I also just would like to say that, to suggest that, that the whole thing with China is something that's brand-new is completely false. China has had China has had concerns about the recyclables that they will, that they take since 2011, and in fact, in 2013, they initiated Operation Green Fence, which cracked down a lot on the recyclables they had. And then China Sword, I think is the name of it, was announced in July to the World Trade Organization in July of 2017. We were supposed to have a study session on recycling last November. It got canceled, who knows why, and drug on. So, I heard the comment made last week that, that the next day, the plan was due, but it was, said that the commission, it was ready to go in October, but the commission had delayed that, and I don't, I applaud you guys for asking for market studies, but I don't think it was your fault that, that this wasn't quite ready. This is, this has been on the table for a long time. Enough about recycling. One thing, I sent an email to all of you on Thursday of last week about your city manager search. I'm disappointed that there has not been more transparency in this entire process. I sent you a link of about eight different communities that provide meet and greets for their multiple finalists in their city manager search. We talked earlier in here about having stake owner groups, and I'm going to repeat my main concern about not having transparency. And it's whether Mr. Skreg is hired as city manager, or whether it's somebody else. It is not fair to the next city manager to have a non-transparent process. It calls into question public trust and what it is, because right now, nobody has any idea, except for the fact that about three weeks ago, Commissioner Hodges posted on her Facebook page the process that you were following for the city manager hire, and according to that and a comment made by Natalie Fisher last week, that city manager was supposed to be selected and announced last week. Okay? So, I don't know what the, what the future plan is. We know that you had interviews. We don't know how many candidates you interviewed. We don't know who they were, but I'm going to ask you once again to be transparent. Tell us who the finalists are. Let us meet and greet them. Please don't do it the way Springfield did. Please don't select two people. Springfield selected two people. One of them got a raise from their city, and Springfield was left with sort of the default, the last man standing. So, I ask you that if we end up with two finalists, that you look at the possibility of one of them dropping out, and if they do, I hope that you will restart that process. It's only fair to the candidates, and it's only fair to Mr. Benkson and Natalie Fisher. This is not their, this is not their job. This is the job, and it falls rarely on commissioners, but this falls right in the seat of the mayor. You need to provide some leadership, and as a member of the community, I ask that you provide leadership and transparency, and I ask that the rest of you demand that as well. And thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? If there's not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 3, 2018. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 18-7640 describing the corporate limits of the city of Salina. And item 6.3, award bid for a Nimble HF20 SAN to Eagle Software in the amount of $58,054.57.
Are there any items that any commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor Ryan, I'd like 6.3 pulled.
Okay. We'll reserve 6.3. Is there a motion for 6.1 and 6.2 to be approved?
I move that item 6.1 and 6.2 on the consent agenda be approved.
Second. It moved in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two items will pass 6.3.
And this is, Mr. Robb, it's just a, probably a simple question. Is there any user advantage or functional advantage to splitting the purchase of these two devices over two-year period? Or would you gain anything if you got them both this year, as opposed to?
Just helps the budget. But I can take what I have now and move part of it to the Bicentennial Center, and I have my backup covered, and I can put a new one in here, get my data I need, the next year buy a new one for there.
Right.
It just helps the budget and makes the finance lady happy.
So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't still be at risk of one of the units being overloaded by just replacing one?
No, no, no.
That was the only question.
Good.
Thank you.
Are there no other questions? Is there anyone that would like to address this item from the public? We're ready for action, then. I'll bring it back up here.
Okay, I move approval of the award bid for Nimble HF20 SAN to Eagle Software in the amount of $58,054.57.
Second.
It moved in seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes 5-0. We're ready for administration, and 7.1.
Item 7.1, resolution number 18-7641, amending the comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina to provide for water and wastewater rates.
Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The Finance Department with the input of Director of Utilities Martha Tasker completed the annual review of water and wastewater utility rates necessary to provide for operating costs, debt service coverage, and both minor and major capital investment in infrastructure maintenance. The review considers such factors as anticipated volumes, number of accounts, projected operating costs, capital needs, adequate reserves, and debt service, service needs for the five-year period from 2019 to 2023. This process occurs annually. The review, it addresses the desirability of avoiding rate shock either as a result of artificially holding rates down or of a large future capital need, so that we don't have to raise rates a large amount in one year. This review was presented to City Commission at its November 26, 2018 study session. During that study session, Commission inquired about the percentage rates, and I didn't put this in here, but I got this information later. You had asked us about, compared to some of the other cities, what are their rates going up each year? So, the Utilities Department brought some information together and provided it to me, and so I did a little review of, for, there's two different types of fees. One is on the actual meter, and one is on the usage of the meter. And I looked at Junction City, Hutchinson, Lawrence, Topeka, and Wichita. Our rates are increasing, as you know, 3.5%. The rates of, for usage from the other cities ranged from 5.3 to 6.6, and for the meter fee, ours is also 3.5%. The range for the increases for, for two years for the other cities was between 5.3 and 6.5. So, as you can see, our rates are significantly, going up a significantly lower amount than the other cities that we're looking at. And that was a comparison of their most current two-year period. So, if it was some 17 to 18 or 18 to 19, those were the numbers that I was looking at. Just wanted to provide you that information because you had asked about that. The projections that we use rely on a number of assumptions. We've shown those in the blue sheet, annual increase for operating costs, vehicle and equipment repairs, system enhancements. One thing that we discussed in the study session that's a little bit new this year is we had been providing $2 million worth, well, $4 million worth of water line improvements that we were debt financing, and because that debt financing was going to continue to grow and grow and grow, after we reached a $20 million mark, we've chosen that to provide a $2 million water line improvement budget to come out of, be paid out of cash annually beginning 2021. That will avoid having that debt service fee that's going to go up all the time, every year. In this, we've also included the project for the South Wellfield Project Water Plant and the wastewater plant and wastewater design. A little over 18% of the revenues allocated to the customer charge, which is the, just the monthly fee, that kind of balances out with the volume charges. Summary information, including future expense and revenue projections, cash balances, and rate structures, are shown in the attachments that I provided for you. Also, in the blue sheet, I provided you with a typical bill for customers. I did add on this something a little bit different. I included the trash service, because the bill you get isn't just for water. So, we wanted to include what the changes that we were proposing in the comprehensive fee schedule later in another item would look like. So, for a conservation user, which is a pretty small user of 2,000 gallons, their water bill would go from $50.93 to $52.68, or $1.75 more a month. For a typical residential customer, which is 8,000 gallons of water and $6,000 of waste, it goes from $102.73 to $106.26, which is $3.53 a month. And for a higher residential user, it would go from $173.21 to $179.25, which is $5.95 a month. I've attached, there's a full rate schedule attached in, in resolution 18-7641. These rates provide sufficient resources for fund, for the fund, and maintain the foundation for relatively rate stability over the next five years. Future rate increases are projected to range from 3 to 4%,. As we talked about in the study session, we projected the next five years at 3.5% to level that out. Future rates are identified in the resolution, but will be reevaluated each year based on the, then, current circumstances. The recommended rates will provide both short-term of a water and wastewater utility, as well as providing the foundation to meet long-term operating and capital needs. Conformance with the strategic plan, the city will provide the highest quality of services, consistent with governing body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. Our recommended action is that you adopt resolution 18-7641, amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide water and wastewater rates effective January 1, 2019. And if you have any questions, I brought the experts along.
Questions for Ms. Pack.
One question, which will spill over from 7.1 to 7.2. The, under sanitation, the monthly trash cart fee is listed at 16.
You'll see that come in 7.2.
Right.
Yeah.
This does not include any recycling carts.
Correct.
But last week, we voted to send the issue of recycling back to the Solid Waste Management Committee.
Correct.
And then readdress that, so.
And these fees are set for 2019, and from my understanding of the business side of the sanitation and recycling is that even at this point, if we take that back and it comes back and you go full-blown recycling, to get those things put in place by, with trucks and carts and things like that, it'll be late in 2019 before we can even get to that point. So, the fees that we're adjusting, take those out, because we were going to be charging those people for that beginning July 1, and we're just not going to be ready at that point. True?
True. To put it another way, the conversation we had, I guess, last week was, at this point, we anticipate even if we placed an order for the truck, the fully automated curbside recycling trucks and the corresponding carts, it'd be year-end, beginning of 2020, before we take delivery. So, we wouldn't be able to implement a curbside recycling program in 2019, so there was no need to implement a curbside recycling rate in 2019. We need to get through the decision, and we need to place the order, receive the equipment, implement the program, and most likely, the rate would need to take effect in 2020.
So, if there is some other solution for continuing curbside recycling, either under the current program or under a private hauler, would you anticipate that rate being charged separately from the city? Or how would that rate get put back into here?
Well, I think there's two scenarios there. One is the, our subscription curbside recycling program. Until directed otherwise, that will continue, and that'll be charged the applicable rate. If we, coming out of the Solid Waste Committee recommendation, and you ultimately authorize discontinuing that service with the expectation that it'd be provided privately, in our current model, that would be purely at the discretion of that private operator. If we took RFPs, or if we did something in a franchising-type approach, we could solicit proposals and at least identify one service provider for an agreed-upon rate. But I don't think any of the conversation as relates to sanitation or curbside recycling so far have gone to a franchising approach. That's just not something we've done in Salina to this point. So, sorry if I got straight off of there, but curbside, until we decide otherwise, curbside subscription recycling will continue. If a private provider chooses to provide that service, either in competition with us, or in response to us discontinuing that service, the expectation would be that would be at a price determined by them.
So, the current curbside recycling would be included in the 16?
No. These are just line items that are changing in terms of fee schedule.
Correct, and that line item did not change.
So, these are changes only?
Correct.
Okay. So, the, as far as total fee schedule, the fee for recycling would be in a separate?
It's already, it was already approved in August when we did the comprehensive fee schedule, yes. Any other questions on that item?
I just, I had a couple of questions, but thank you very much for asking that, because that was one of the questions that I wanted to ask. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for getting us that information on what some of our neighboring cities are doing in terms of increase. And then I also wanted to thank both you and Martha for providing the total bill, because when we're talking about increasing water rates and sanitation, it's really helpful for me, because I'm one of many people that get just one bill, to know what that entire bill is going to be. So, yeah, so we're looking at an increase of between, for the average user, $3.50 to $6.00 on a monthly, on a monthly water bill, if they use city sanitation pickup. I had just a question in terms of some of the numbers, and I think that we had maybe talked about this last time. Does this, do the, the projections, does that 3.5%, I mean, in your crystal ball, does that go on in 2024, 2025? Or, I mean, or is that something that's going to, that's going to level off for us once we have the debt service in place?
Well, I think because you're always looking with inflation rates, that rate's going to be pretty close to that number, because we're looking at inflation rates of close to 3% anyway. So, just the cost of operating costs, as you can see, we've increased those 3%, most of that's going to that. I mean, so I wouldn't anticipate that number coming down. It's a pretty level number. What I've looked at in the past, that number's been fairly close. Between 3 and 4% is what I've seen over the past five years, and we would anticipate that number to go forward. With us being able to do this by trying to get it level now, we're trying to avoid that, those big fluctuations and those big, you know, downward or upward fluctuations.
And I guess I would add one caveat to that, and that is, this plan funds quite a bit of significant capital improvements that are kind of our, have been our long-term high-priority items. So, in terms of the water line replacement program, it kind of gets it established, rather than debt financing, it should be able to continue. The South Wellfield is accounted for in here, the wastewater plant design and improvement. So, I don't know, and Martha's here, she may know of, the only other thing that I know of, and it's not directly water-related, is groundwater contamination at Schilling Air Force Base is an unknown at the moment. Beyond that, this addresses kind of our high-profile capital improvements that we foresee in, out in the future. So, might give us a little bit of capacity to back down that rate when we get out in the future.
And then just one final question. Does this, do, do the numbers assume, like, particular population growth, population stable?
It's fairly stable. We look at the number of accounts that we currently have, and I believe the increase that we use in this assumption is like 0.5%. So, we have 20,000 some odd accounts, and so we don't really fluctuate from that amount a lot.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Actually, just, kind of an embarrassing question. I haven't thought of it. How do you know how much wastewater is being used per household? Is there a meter for the water going out?
We don't, and it's purely based on consumption. In fact, one of the things that we do is, is we'll work, we will provide an irrigation meter so that there's a recognition that irrigation water is not going down the sewer, and you can be charged a different rate. But the assumption is that wastewater rates are in proportion to your, your consumption. That doesn't necessarily mean all that is discharged down the sewer.
All right, so both of these numbers are not actually measured, okay.
On the wastewater side...
On the wastewater side, we look at the water usage in the winter quarter, January, February, and March, where typically all the water you use at that point in time is going down the sewer. And that winter quarter sets your rate for residential customers for sewer for the rest of the year.
I figured there was a method to the madness. Thank you.
That's a method.
That is a key point I forgot. In fairness, then, you're not getting charged for filling a pool or washing a car or trying to isolate that quarter that's most representative.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this item? If not, we'll bring it back up here for...
Oh.
Okay.
John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. I have to tell you, I appreciate the questions that the two of you asked. One of the questions I would have is, did anybody do any modeling other than a half a percent annual growth? And can anybody here tell me, when was the last time Salina experienced a half a percent annual growth? Because from 2010, or 2000 to 2010, the growth rate in Salina was 4.4% for those 10 years. That translates into roughly a .44 annual growth. All the projections I've seen have shown that growth for the next 40 years, from 2014 to 2044, was to be, or 2064, I can't remember exactly, it might have been 50 years. But Wichita State University, the Center for Economic Development Business Research, their numbers were half a percent growth over that entire time. So I took the liberty of modeling four different, or I'm sorry, six different population growth scenarios. One of them being that we just don't see any growth and we don't see any decline. Couple that, we see a couple of different rates of decline, a couple of different rates of growth, wanting the .5% annual growth. I think .5% annual growth is irresponsible. Those numbers show that that is the only model that doesn't operate in a deficit, and I only went out 25 years. If I'm understanding correctly, now we're using 3% as the rate of inflation. Are we using that on everything now? Are we judging that if we don't do sales tax that are 3% annual increase each year that we're losing sales tax? I mean, are we, are we now adopting, for the longest time, we used 2% as the consumer price index and the rate of, rate of inflation for projecting revenues and expenses in the future. It's what we've used for the downtown. It's what development strategies use for all of that projections. It's typically the number we use. Now it sounds like we're using 3% annual growth. Is that so the numbers work? I still contend that we do not need to build a $32 million water treatment facility for redundancy. I'd like to see other communities that have redundancy our size in that particular manner. I think, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Abilene paradox, but basically, Google it. And I'm going to tell you right now, and I'll go sit down. We are embarked upon a trip to Abilene, okay? We do not need this water treatment facility. We need to take care of what we have, and I'm very disturbed to see that we are cutting our water main replacement in half to do this. So if we can't take care of what we already have, then I think we need to take a really hard look at ourselves and see what kind of burdens we're placing on future generations. And I will tell you that if we're doing 3.5% to alleviate sticker shock, 21% over six years is sticker shock. And if it's going to be 3 to 3, 3 to 4% every year going forward, it's not sustainable. So I understand we have to do the fixes to the sanitary sewer system. That's important. We need to obviously pass KDHT regulations. But that's a need to. I still think that this water treatment facility is not a need to. Our maintenance of our existing water lines is also a need to. Thank you.
So I can try to speak to some of those items. Personally, I don't, I don't rely on population growth projections as we estimate the water fund budget. I mean, it's really a trend of revenue and expenses historically. And to, to focus on the residential component with industrial and commercial users, I think, you know, you've got more use in the industrial, commercial, or at least by volume per customer, you've got more use there. So I would defer to Martha in terms of kind of the past history, but our projection is looking at our growth trend as it relates to revenue. With respect to expenses, to say that we've assumed 2%, we've kind of conflated sales tax growth assumptions on the general fund side as it relates to other budgeting. The 3% number is our assumption about increases in salaries, supplies, and services. Those are, you know, salaries, I guess you could say, are within our control, but supplies and services are outside our control. And we've had a history, and we've had conversations about if revenue, if expense growth is exceeding revenue growth, we're at a point of influx and we need to be prepared for that. So we're trying to budget conservatively by assuming at least 3% growth in our expenses to try to account for that. With respect to the $4 million a year in water main replacement, that was a limited-duration project. The expectation was $20 million over a five-year timeframe. What you now have before you is trying to extend that approach beyond that five-year timeframe. And at $300,000 a year of debt service on $4 million a year, it wouldn't take long before all we have left is debt service. So we're trying to dial back a number that was affordable within the budget on an annual basis that reflected what staff is actually able to budget and get contracted and constructed and take, I guess what you could say was kind of a pilot program approach and extend it so that we have something that's sustainable. I would tell you that I think, you know, Salina's in a pretty good position being able to do that when you look at kind of the public management dilemma that a lot of communities find themselves in in terms of deferred maintenance. With respect to the sewer, or I'm sorry, the water plant, there is another agenda item today on that topic, but that's kind of the culmination of a lot of planning. Staff has brought, has included it in the budget as previously instructed. We've contracted for design of that facility, and we've acquired, we've actively made decisions recently to acquire the land for that project. So we just, as it relates to the budget, it's been incorporated as previously instructed. I don't know if I missed any topics, but...
No, I would agree with that.
Would, would this be the appropriate time, or maybe 7.4, to just give a summary of how the South Well Field is viewed more as a need rather than a wish?
The topics certainly interrelate, and if you think there's a likelihood that you're not going to go forward with that project, that could factor into the budget and the rates. So I guess it wouldn't be inappropriate to raise that question now.
And maybe for persons who have not been able to come to study sessions and read all this material, just to get a brief summary of the why behind the South Well Field. It would sort of put one person in the room on the spot more than the others, but...
I will say that project is not, while we are building toward that project, we have not, it's not included in the 19 budget because it won't be completed. So when we look at those numbers, we're not anticipating that debt service to be, to come to fruition on our actual numbers until 2020. But we're looking at it as a future project so that we can get those numbers to where we want them to be and kind of level out those rates. Because if we get to 2020 and all of a sudden we add $2 million in debt service, we're looking at a whole different rate change than we would be if we're looking at that $2 million three years ago and anticipating that.
So that would certainly explain the financial, the reason to include it in the finances now. But just as far as speaking to the necessity of the plan itself, or the reasons for, back up in this...
Martha would be glad to talk about that.
Yeah. I'm not judging the decision, but I think just for people to hear so they can begin to get some understanding as to why.
I did kind of have a plan of how to go through the work that we had done, but I'll maybe try to skip to, down to where I talk a little bit about our drought capacity. Our downtown water treatment plant, we say it has a total capacity of 20 million gallons per day, but in reality, its real firm capacity is 10 MGD. If we lose one piece of the train or portion of capacity, we're at 10 MGD. And that, that's a limiting factor there. Our downtown well field, we've done some work to it to increase our drought capacity. And our number that we're using, we haven't tested it in a drought yet with lower water levels, is to reduce our capacity by about 15% or that's 12.8 MGD. And we have the access district as another tool. The access district, really, we bought, I'll say it's storage in the Canoplis Lake. So I call it, we bought the cup to put the water in. But Mother Nature has to rain and put water in the cup so we have water to distribute out. So we've made some estimates over time about how much that water might use and timeframes that it's been below that. So it's a tool for us, and it helps to first, really give us a diverse operation. So when you really boil it down, the South Water Treatment Plant is water rights that were provided to us from the Schilling Air Force Base. That has about 2,500 acre feet, which is half of what we have downtown. And going back in time, our downtown well field, to talk a little bit about age, was born in 1935. And our lines that bring the water in from that well field date back to that timeframe. So we have an aging well field. We try to do work on it and do maintenance to different things, but we do have some aging infrastructure there. Our treatment plant was born in 1883 and then actually owned by a private company, sold to the city in 1926, and our structures there age back to 1940. And I could keep going of issues. The contamination was a consideration when we started this project because our downtown well field is laden with different types of contamination, whether it's the benzene, the TCE from dry cleaners, or the carbon tet from the elevator. So always a concern of contamination. And then the Schilling Air Force Base contamination was in the picture and headed towards our downtown well field and the idea of cleaning that up. Our well field out south basically is out of that line of fire. So it's some available water rights, it's close to the river, that recharges itself fairly quickly. So we have these supplies that are far apart. Our downtown well field, all of our wells are very close together. And we pump several wells in one location, we pull the groundwater down. It's called the cone of influence, which really reduces what you can get out of the well field. So we're trying to balance all of these things that could happen. And the importance of the South Plant came about, in some degree, we were working with the hospital back in 13 when the tornado was an issue, and they were trying to develop a plan how to supply water to the community in the event of a natural disaster. And the South Well Field gives us about 3.5 MGD that would be enough. It's not what we use day in and day out in the winter, but enough to fill the downtown area and our water towers and be able to provide some water to the hospital in the event of a disaster. And to our, the rest of our community to where we'd have the, I call it, the basic life needs would be covered. Now, when I look back, you know, we're looking at a crystal ball, and if I had that magic wand and that crystal ball and could guess what all might happen to us and when and how, it'd really be helpful. But right now, we're trying to look at what do we have and how do we best mix and match that together to carry us into the future for the next 50 years? So hopefully that helps. It's all about, and another issue we have is, surface water is great and it comes down the river, but we have to pay attention to how it fits into our process and use. We have disinfection byproducts rules that come into play. And in the event, we have to be very careful of temperature of water and different things and timeframe to make sure we don't have an issue with that requirement. We're doing some evaluation of that right now. That puts us kind of in question about how much river water we should use when it's temperatures high and the river's down. So it's a lot of balls in the air, and we're trying to balance them all together to ensure that we really have a reliable, sustainable water system that carries us into the future. I don't, I've covered a lot of bases there, but without going back and reading the whole notebook to you, that's kind of the highlights.
If I could add one thing, you touched on the THMs. Martha described the assurance program, or the Canoplis Reservoir as being the cup, but Mother Nature has to fill the cup. I just want to be clear, by way of the assurance program, we didn't buy the entire cup, nor did we buy the bottom of the cup. We bought our own little slice of the cup. So there has to be sufficient water within Canoplis Reservoir for us to be able to take advantage of that assurance water that was, that was essentially purchased.
Yeah, it's a storage for the water, not necessarily the water. But, you know, history shows that there's been water in there in the past. We know that over the last, in 2006, we had a severe drought. We had another issue in 2012 where I was on the phone every day during the summer with all the regulators and the irrigators talking about water supply. We started that process in July of this year, and our neighbors to the west got flooded, haze and rustle and filled the lake and took that issue away from us to where we wouldn't have been in another drought condition. However, Salina to the east was still in drought condition. So how severe the drought is and how often the drought occurs and what contamination does to us and the age of our treatment plant, it's just a lot of different tools that we use to carry us into the future. I don't know if I got to your question, but I covered a lot of ground on different topics.
I tell you, for off the top of your head, that was very good. Thank you.
I'll plan a little harder next time. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to address this item?
Just wanted to, thank you, Martha. That was good stuff. Wanted to bring up one of the major errors I see in city planning in that the, a bigger house is going to have more toilets, more sinks. It's newer house, it's going to have more appliances, it's going to have ice makers. And I think the people on the north side bear unfair cost when we raise rates using the same formula of waste. We don't have any way to measure waste, but I think that a house that's got a two-inch water supply line versus a house maybe smaller on the north side that's got a one-inch supply line, I think that two-inch house is going to use and waste typically a lot more water than somebody on the north side who's conscious about their usage because they incur costs. And you're preparing a 3% increase. I think it would be better, I think it would be more fair if the newer houses that we're so fond of supporting with special assessments, in today's dollars where we have these houses on the other side of town that are 1940s, 1950s, in that day's dollars, which have not been adjusted for inflation, I think it's appropriate that some of these folks pay more because they're going to waste more. There's going to be more, not that they're wasting, but they're going to use it, consume more, and it's going to go down the sewer, and the sewer is being paid for with today's dollars. Where the folks on the north side, nothing's been done for them, and they have smaller houses, they're not going to be able to waste as much, and I think they're going to be a little more cautious about it because it's going to be a financial impact. Folks on either side of town at 3%, $2, $3, I think that's way, way shorter what they ought to be paying if the city's investing to put those houses out there. And the water plant, as she said, it's, this one's old. We need to pay attention to the maintenance of these infrastructure things that are on this side of town instead of going and putting, throwing money at the other side to increase and give us capacity we maybe not need. And if we, we're using growth numbers that I don't think are correct either, when we're using, it's all we have to use, I mean, we need to look at those. But the growth numbers are going to be something more that we should be creating more revenue. If the growth numbers are going to be something less than we should, than we don't, we can't justify an increase. So something to chew on, so.
Thank you, sir. Just so we're clear, both our water rates and our sewer rates are consumption-based. So regardless of the location of the home or the customer, a customer that uses twice as much water will pay twice as much for their water and their sewer charge.
as much water will pay twice as much for their water and their sewer charge as the hypothetical customer that uses half as much. It's not based on line size, it's not based on geographic location, it is purely consumption based, with the exception of needing to estimate sewage.
But their provision was not paid for in dollars past. It's paid for in dollars today. And that's part of the special assessment.
Provision of the mains?
Yes.
In the special assessment scenario, the provision of the mains is paid for as part of a special assessment tax against the benefiting property. So that pass, that cost is passed through to the end beneficiary.
It seems to me that their ongoing usage is more appropriate and fair, that they're newer, they're bigger. Yes, they use twice as much. There's a formula that you calculate a waste from. I think it should be reexamined and increased for those houses that are newer. They have potential to use more and waste more. I think some of these houses on the other side of town don't, aren't fairly built in some cases. They're paying for development that didn't help them.
And I'm not looking to disagree with you. Our billing structure is, we take any customer, any residential customer's usage in the winter quarter, and we assume that that is their usage by which they're charged their sewer charge. So their sewer charge is based on our best estimate of their consumption of water.
I would again say that we need to, we should look again at that. It doesn't feel fair, doesn't feel just.
Hello. Brian Fraser, 512 South Eighth. Listening to the folks speak about the increased costs of building the new plant and how it is going to benefit us as a city at whole, I do appreciate that because I think our water system in the city is archaic, to say the least. There are still houses with lead lines going to them, I believe. Not a great thing. But in saying that, then we are going to, it goes back to the whole special assessments and building areas, expanding areas on, in different locations of the city, which I have no problem with expansion. But let's look at fixing what we have. Since it's going to cost the citizens money, we're paying taxes. Let's fix our current water systems, our current sewer systems, to where we have adequate facilities for those people that are here and not estimating on what's going to happen with some new development, if those properties are going to be sold, at how much they're going to be sold at or anything like that. Yes, it is a consumption-based process because, you're right, a meter only reads what a meter's going to read. Unless you can go in and jack with them, which there's, you know, ways of finding that out. But if you're using 4,000 gallons or whatever, just as a number, 4,000 gallons a month, well then that meter's going to read that. It doesn't matter if you have a six-inch water service or a three-quarter inch water service, makes no difference. But let's fix those water services that we do currently have because we do need better services within the city and not overburden a system that is already overburdened. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Ratslove, Salina. You know, we, I guess we're heading eventually towards abandoning our downtown well field? No? Okay. Well, you know, I've been kind of following the water issue and I'm looking forward to better water sources to, you know, to, we don't want to end up with situations where we did a few years ago when the river goes dry and it impacts our ability to have decent water in our homes. But I think that the other side of that is, and that's going to happen again, you know, the other side of that is, and I haven't heard about this for a while, so I'm going to mention it at this point, is conservation. You know, we, I still see people's lawn sprinklers going down the drain, you know, down the curb. And I think that it would benefit us to conserve water and to enforce those rules that we have in place. And furthermore, if we could, if we don't already have that, and I haven't heard of it, so I don't know, people who are seeking grants or, you know, through whatever foundations or EPA or whatever it might be, to assist people in replacing their four-gallon toilets, to fix leaks, and certainly, and I'm just appalled to hear that we still have lead lines leading into people's houses. I would like to see the city help that change. It's important for our people. So if we could do things to reduce the usage, take some of the strain off of things and... Sometimes I feel like maybe in our reducing staff and time on things, we're overleaning ourselves and, you know, that doesn't give people time and, you know, brain time to look for solutions to some of our problems.
Thank you. Are there any others? We'll bring it back up here for discussion or a motion on this item.
The only thing that I would like to add to the comments that have been made is, just speaking directly to the population projections, because, I mean, that is a concern. Is the 3.5% increase that we're projecting to 2023, is that just going to, you know, is that going to continue to be ongoing? I did look up KU, WSU, the US Census Bureau. Yeah, I mean, their growth models are pretty bleak. We're talking about, and I think that, like you said, the .05 or did you say .5? .5? Okay, just that they're looking at more of a .05 and a .06 growth model. And the thing that really bothered me is that the working age versus the senior citizen population, the 65 and over population is going to be, according to one study, it was like a 46% increase, and according to the other, it was like a 45% increase. And the working population, the working age, like 25 or 21 to 65, is going to decrease by 22%. And I agree, we can talk about whether or not these institutions are using good models or we don't have a crystal ball and we don't know that that's what's going to happen. And certainly, we could find ourselves in a growth scenario, but I think it's incumbent upon us to at least be mindful that no matter how much we're hoping that Salina continues to grow, when we look at North Central Kansas as a region, there's the distinct possibility that we could remain the same size or even contract a little bit. And so I'm really glad that Dr. Davis brought up the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant item, because these items are kind of inextricably linked to me. And when we are talking about investing in a really big, new South Well Field treatment facility, but at the expense of, you know, having our budget for upgrading water lines, I'm just worried that if we, maybe we can't afford the new water treatment plant, or maybe if we can't afford to maintain our existing infrastructure, maybe, you know, we just can't afford this. So, you know, just to, thank you for the opportunity to kind of get to think this through aloud, because this has been a very, really, really hard one for me to figure out. And I don't deny that there's a need for an increase in water rates, but I think that where I'm coming from is I'd like to see those increases go toward fixing our existing infrastructure, because I was not under the impression, and I never have been under the impression, that that was a four or five-year thing. As a matter of fact, when I'd asked staff about it in the past, you know, how long is it going to take us to get all of our water lines fixed? The answer was about 30 years. So I had just assumed that that $4 million commitment to our existing water lines was going to be there until we had them all taken care of. And, you know, that, maybe that's on me for just assuming that, but at any rate, I'm, that's where I'm coming from on this.
Martha, I had a question. When we were discussing the $4 million, I was thinking this was bringing us more in line with what we're actually getting done on an annual basis, the $2 million. Is that correct?
That's correct. And basically, the last projects that we awarded for the water mains, we looked at the timeframe we've been working, and that's not as fresh in my mind, but maybe eight years and we've done $16 million. I'm rounding, and we have about $4 million left to get to $20 million. And I did go back and evaluate out of that 19, late 50s, early 60s, we've done over half of those lines to date. And talking with our engineer, he thought in, you know, at $2,000 or $2 million a year, that in the next seven years, we'd wrap up all of those pipes that were in that timeframe when we're really struggling with them. And truly, $2 million a year is what we're able to get done out in the field with the staff that we have and the other projects that go on.
That's what I kind of remember, so.
If you would, you might speak to the life cycle of the PVC pipes and the product that's being installed since that problematic timeframe and what our maintenance experience has been for lines other than what you just talked about.
We put the PVC pipe in, I believe in the late 90s, the first project goes out to Flying J. It was prior to me coming to work here. Listening to, if you listen to the ductile iron pipe, folks, they'll say PVC doesn't last as long. If you talk to the PVC manufacturers, they promote 60 to 80 years. And we do know that the ductile iron pipe is, we've got some that's lasted 100 years. So we do know that. The PVC, they say 60 to 80 years, and that's what I'm using for now because I don't have that long of experience to get to there. But it's been in the ground for 40-plus years in some locations, and as long as you're using the right PVC, the C900, the heavy pipe, I think there isn't any reason to think we wouldn't get 60 to 80 years out of it. So that's where I think we're going. And it's smooth pipe inside, so it doesn't latch on and grow shut with the chemicals in the water.
And I guess following up to one of the comments made, do we still have lead pipes out there or is that?
When we talk about, as you might, some of you remember, we did do quite a drill with sampling for lead in our water system. And we actually treat our water to where it's not, to the corrosive mold or area where it actually pulls the lead out of the system. So we do a treatment process to try to, you know, take care of that issue. So we don't have lead in copper issues when we test and sample. And that would go back to the Sleen County Health Department and the tests that were done. And there, we think that there's possibly, out of our 20,000 in some services, we don't have very good records, but maybe 1,200 that could be lead. And as we do these water main replacement projects, we've been pecking away at those. But I don't want anybody to get alarmed about it because we're testing our water and we're covering it. The real issue where you see a lot of the copper and lead that finds its way out of the, is inside the homes, the fixtures in the homes that were built in certain years is really another issue to worry about, how do we deal with that in the future? But that's the biggest issue. But we try to provide a treatment process that holds that all in place.
And to clarify, we're not talking about lead mains, we're talking about lead service lines.
Right, that's what, I guess that's what's getting at. So they're actually service lines from our main into the homes, I guess.
Yes, that could be, you know, long-term, trying to decide, you know, who do those belong to is always the issue and the piping in the homes. There are some areas where they're starting to look and see if there's programs to help with internal plumbing inside homes, because that's one of the areas that can be just a little bit more severe about leaching out the lead and copper. So I don't know if I got to the heart of your question or not.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's part of my question is the, it's not city pipe, it's the piping from our main into the homes, if there is any, or in the homes.
Yeah, there could be some there. And we did a detailed analysis of all of our records dating back as far as we could and identifying which were copper and which are, we don't know. So the we don't know are the ones I'm assuming could be some other material. They could be something different than copper, but I don't, I just have to go with what's officially identified, so. But we have evaluated all of them.
As long as you're up there, if I'm not interrupting Commissioner Hoppek, do we need to invest in more staff? I mean, if we're, you know, if we're not able to use the...
Boy, that'd be great if I could find some to hire. We have been interviewing like crazy to try to hire staff. And the economy at this time is evidently good enough that it's a struggle. Natalie, well, she left, she's been helping me try to look and research staff and I think Jim in Public Works has had the same issue, so.
And retention's an issue as well.
Well, I was going to leave to that one next. We get staff and get them trained and I have some that their duration is two to three years and then that next better job comes along and you just got them to where you think they can do you some good and they're gone. So retention and hiring are probably one of our biggest challenges. I've talked to Natalie about trying to work with the school district and some kind of training and program to maybe highlight that, but if we could find more staff, we have openings right now.
So if you're listening there, out there, please, please apply. And as a city commissioner, we will, I hope, do a better job to make sure that your wages that you start at now will cover any increases that you will see in your cost of living with your water and your sewer, since we didn't do that this year.
Any further discussion?
I guess my comment would be that if I'm looking at a 2% annual increase, as some individuals may have brought up, to think that we can do a new South Water Field to protect ourselves against drought and have quality water, to also do a wastewater treatment plant for that, let's say 1.4% over what our standard would be, I think it's, the staff's done a phenomenal job of being able to protect our community for the long term, but with a 3.5% increase. So that's my comment.
Would you like to make a motion, sir?
Are we still open to the public? We have a gentleman.
Oh, well, I thought we were back up here.
You asked if there were any more comments. When you were speaking of the home, the ownership of the line between the city main and the house, I know that meters used to be inside of the houses and the city owns from everything, from the tap to the meter. Correct?
Not anymore.
I can take that.
You should just stay up there, Martha.
Boy, have I been through these issues over and over and over again. When the meters inside the home, the property owner owns from the, what we call the curb stop. And that's a little device behind the curb.
Yeah, I know.
Not, so the city doesn't own to the meter. The city owns to the curb stop.
It used to be from the corp to the stop.
Yes.
Yes.
Not all the way, and it still is today.
Okay, so they own from the tap to the stop.
Yes. And then from there on in is the property owners.
Right, because they took the meters out of the houses and put them out at the street.
Even in the scenario where the meter was in the home?
Right.
They own from the corp at, near the curb, through their yard, whatever the routing may be, to the meter and then into their home.
Those 1,200 lines that you're not sure of what they are or anything like that, those are from the city's tap to the stop?
To the stop, yes.
Which is the city-owned part of that water line?
If they're still in service, they are, yes. And some of them are out of service. We have a pretty good tally of all of that.
But there's like 1,200 of them somewhere in there that you're not sure exactly what...
It doesn't identify the material.
Right, it doesn't, and it's, yeah.
Some look like they should be copper by the timeframe they were installed, but since it doesn't say that, I can't look you in the eye and say that is the truth.
Yes, so we still have those 1,200 or so water lines that are city-owned, that we're not sure what they are, if they're lead-based, lead lines, or what exactly they are. So once again, I say, let's revisit that and take care of the things that we have in place before we start looking at expanding and putting more burden on a system that is way overburdened. You don't have the staff to do it right now, so. You don't have the staff to do it right now, so if you add all these other issues, what staff are you gonna have to take care of those?
We actually have pretty good luck at our water and wastewater plants for staff. It's our wastewater collection crew and our water distribution crew, for whatever reason, that is just hard work in the elements, and we, we, you've probably seen them working, so.
Well, I worked in those elements.
So you understand then, so, but we truly are tracking all of those and have developed that to be ahead of any regulations that KDHE might put out.
Let's fix those 1,200 lines before we start looking at expanding those and making this an overworked system. Thank you.
Thank you both. The resolution before us is about a comprehensive fee schedule. Do we have a motion on the item?
Mayor Ryan, I move we adopt Resolution Number 18-7641, amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide for water and wastewater rates effective January 1, 2019.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The item passes four to one. We'll go to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 18-7642, establishing and amending fees in the comprehensive fee schedule related to Public Works utility right-of-way permit, inspection of permitted work, and sanitation fees.
Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The 2019 comprehensive fee schedule was approved by City Commission on August 20, 2018. Since that time, Public Works staff has reevaluated the process of issuing utility right-of-way permits and the follow-up inspection process. Because the follow-up inspection is required for all utility right-of-way permits, it was determined that it would be beneficial for both customers and staff to consolidate the two fees, lessening, thus eliminating the need for customers to have to pay two separate fees, and eliminate the need for staff to have to invoice, track, and collect the second fee. Staff estimated that the second fee was usually the minimum thirty minutes, so the consolidated fee was adjusted and rounded accordingly. When approved, the sanitation fees had been established under the direction the city was going to implement a fully automated collection system, which included curbside recycling. Since that time, concerns about the relations between the United States and China were brought up in a study session. And also, at that point, staff felt like they could not put, put into place the fully automated and curbside recycling forms. So as a result, the fees are being amended to return to the levels without the inclusion of curbside recycling, but adding an inflationary factor of 3%, rounded to the nearest dollar in most cases, which was not added at the time of the adoption of the comprehensive fee schedule back in August, because we had raised those rates for the other services that we were going to provide. So the current charge for the utility right-of-way permit is $68. The inspection of that permit is $62 an hour. The proposed change is to change that to a one-time fee of $100, leaving the, the follow-up permit inspection at zero. The sanitation fees were $15.50 prior to the inclusion of the sanitation, the curbside recycling. That fee is proposed to go to $16. The walk-in assistance was $15.50, proposed to go to $16. Minimum fee for zero to fifteen days was $7.75, proposed to go to $8. Per-rated partial month is 52 cents a day, proposed to go to 53 cents a day, and the Salina drive-through recycling fee from 94 cents to $1 per month. The fully automated refuse pickup with curbside recycling, this, of course, was the fees that we were gonna implement on January 1st to go into this fully automated and curbside recycling. So all of those fees are going to be eliminated at this time. All of the proposed fees would take effect on January 1st, 2019. The fiscal note, the changes related to right-of-way permits will have little effect on revenues because this is a consolidation of two existing fees. Because sanitation fees were budgeted, including the new recycling fees, the revenue estimates will, estimates will be lower than expected. However, the associated costs for implementing the program will also be lowered, so the overall effect on the fund balance should be minimal. The increase on the drive-through recycling fee is estimated to produce about $14,500, which will allow staff to increase public education, purchase additional tools, and add additional programs such as shredded paper and aluminum foil. Conformance with the strategic plan, the city will provide the highest quality of service consistent with governing body, direction, available resources, and staff commitment. Our action item is to make a stable operating budget for the delivery of core public services. You have four options to approve Resolution 18-7642 as proposed, amending the fees in the 2019 comprehensive fee schedule related to utility right-of-way permits and sanitation fees, approve Resolution 18-7642, make amendments to the proposed fees, postpone approval of the Resolution 18-7642, or not approve Resolution 18-7642. If you have any questions, I brought other staff to help me answer those questions. I think we've talked about most of this in our previous item, but if you do have additional questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Just to be clear, when the automated refuse collection begins, this fee then becomes adjusted upward?
Yes. We would anticipate that to be when we do the comprehensive fee in the fall, again, for the budget for 2020, then we would anticipate that fee would go back up to, including that, that automated. And it could be done anytime in between there. If for some, some reason we got there faster than we could, we can always come back and do that, that adjustment.
I went out and looked at the comprehensive fee schedule that was adopted in August, and with respect to the current curbside recycling program, and it has four entries. It has startup fee of $10.50 that was previously in place, and it stays at $10.50 per the resolution passed in 2017, a curbside recycling service fee of $5.50 per month, and staying at $5.50 per month for that 2017 resolution. Then it also has two line items in it, startup fee of zero, starting July 1st of next year, and curbside recycling services of zero, starting July 1st of next year. So I think there was an anticipation that that program would be discontinued, and we may need to remove that, that reduction in fee until we make a definitive decision on the curbside recycling service. But I'll throw that out to Jim and Debbie, whether I'm missing something that that's already been accounted for.
We did, we anticipated that the curb, based on the conversations from the study session, that that would be possibly ended on 2/1 of 19. So we could, we would have to go back and adjust that if that decision was made the other way.
And that's a good point. Depending on what decision ultimately gets made with respect to curbside recycling, as long as it doesn't extend past July 1st of 2019, that probably will take another comprehensive fee schedule adjustment to reflect the decision that gets made.
So we can approve this the way it is and then address that in July?
Yes, and I, I think you certainly can approve it the way it is. Curbside recycling stays in place, the fee stays in place till at least July 1st of 2019, and I expect we'll know a lot more between now and July 1st of 2019.
Even though it does say program ends 2/1 of 19...
Yeah, you would have to, I think you would have to adjust it to set, to leave those fees in, and then we could take them out, or vice versa. Because if we're not going to do anything with that program, then on January 1st, those people will not be paying if they have curbside pickup. So I would think that you would want to amend what I've just proposed to you, to add those fees back in until a decision's made, because we did anticipate that they were gonna be removed as of January 1st, or December, or February 1st.
Is that one of the things that we tasked the Solid Waste Committee with reviewing on the 13th, is that Thursday, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Was it the, the curbside 600 people that was part of the conversation?
Okay. All right.
Would it be sufficient to, in the, an amendment, to just say reinstate the fees for recycling without giving a dollar amount?
Any other questions? Thank you for catching that, Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Pack.
My suggestion would be that you amend it by striking the reference to the program ending altogether.
Yep.
And you, and just reiterate that the startup fee will be $10.50, and the curbside recycling service fee would be $5.50 per month. And then that, that gets, my concern would be that if we need to make this decision by January 1st, that we may not get it processed that quickly. Since you met last Monday, based on the direction that you provided, staff has met and identified a number of talking, or discussion points that we really need to staff through for the committee, as well as ultimately the City Commission. And I told Jim Kowach and Jim Toich, I didn't think it was reasonable that they could turn that in two days, which is what it would have taken to prepare for this week's Solid Waste Committee meeting. So we have, we've kind of identified talking points or discussion items, but I anticipate it may take more than one committee meeting before they have gotten through those and can bring you a recommendation. So that's a long way of saying, I think, the decision may extend past January 1st, which to Debbie's point, may cause it to extend beyond February. And so I would suggest that you strike the reference to the program ending in, in February, and you reinstate the fees of $10.50 and $5.50 until we take further action.
You gonna take a shot at that?
I'm trying to find out where, where it gets struck from.
If you see the attachment that I actually included the recycle, the comprehensive fee with the red column?
Right here.
36.
Yeah, so we're adding that back.
The section of curbside recycling, we would just take out that red portion of, of what's proposed, just in that curbside recycling. Makes sense?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to address this item?
I had a question about the resolution. There was a reference to an Exhibit A in the resolution, and I didn't find any Exhibit A in the packet. So I was just wondering what that was, maybe I'm just not seeing it.
I think it's the attachment.
Okay, so it has a different name, it's not Exhibit A, it's something else. And what, what would that be?
It's not attached to there?
It didn't say Exhibit A, so I didn't know what that was referring to. Thank you.
I'd just like to speak for the Solid Waste Board, Peter Carrington, Salina, 606, Washington. Since they don't meet till this week, and they only meet three times a year, it's kind of hard for them to respond to actions that you may take without including them, but it was asked if they were included in the, in this conversation. They couldn't be. So I, again, I'd like to say that that board is a bigger project than just meeting three times a year. And there's a lot of people on it, it's short members, it's missing people that should be on it, and I'd like to, also, there is an application date that I must abide by before I could be considered an applicant for that board. I think that's something that needs to change as well. So give them more time. If you trust them, let them have your favor, please.
Mr. Schreck, they can call special meetings, can't they?
Certainly. As well as, in terms of the application timeframe, we, across the entire, I guess, oh, struggling for a word, but across the array of boards and committees that we appoint, we try to identify target dates, but if we have vacancies and we have applications on file, you can take action throughout the year regardless of, you know, that initial application deadline. So you can fill the vacancies, and they can meet as needed. One of the things that I frankly think that staff's having a conversation about, and we probably need to revisit as it relates to the Solid Waste Committee, is they are serving as the Solid Waste Committee for the county. They're tasked by statute with a countywide plan, and so we as a body, or you as a body, you probably need to think about clarifying their role to provide countywide guidance compared to providing recommendations about our operation of our sanitation service. It's not to say that they can't, but we need to make sure the focus is on that broader responsibility countywide, in my estimation.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address this item? If not, we'll bring it up here for action, please, for more discussion.
I will attempt, unless you want to, to make a motion. Mayor Ryan, I move we approve Resolution 18-7642 as proposed, amending fees in the 2019 comprehensive fee schedule related to utility right-of-way permits and sanitation fees, striking from the fee schedule the ending of the curbside recycling as of 2/1 of 19, and reinstating the current fees.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will pass as amended 50. 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 18-7643, adopting the 2019 to 2023 capital improvement program.
Ms. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The proposed 2019 to 2023 capital improvement plan is attached for your review. The CIP provides the anticipated schedule of capital projects and capital outlay for the next five years, along with anticipated funding sources. Also included are projects that have been identified but are not programmed into specific years because further work is needed to define scope and/or funding source. The proposed CIP has been reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on December 4th, 2018. A resolution from that body is attached and finds that the proposed 2019 CIP projects are consistent with the goals and policies set forth in the comprehensive plan. The sub-CIP includes seven, seven categories. These seven categories are also attached for review and approval. The following changes have been made to the CIP and sub-CIP since the study session on October 1st, 2018. Under the sub-CIP Buildings and Facilities section, emergency repairs were done to the municipal court roof, and repairs were done to the golf course roof, which ended up being under warranty. So those two items, which have been allocated $25,000 each, have been combined into an item called Emergency Building and Facility Repairs, to be used in 2019 for unexpected repairs to city facilities, as brought forth by the Building Maintenance Supervisor. Under Streets, Traffic, and Sidewalks, the gas, under the gas tax fund, there are minor allocation adjustments between the normal projects that they do annually. Under System Enhancements, the Red Fox Lane Sewer Repair Project was added at a cost of $180,000, and that's under Utilities Fund. Under Vehicles Equipment, under the Utilities Fund, there were two items added, replace a high-service pump at a cost of $60,000, and well rehabilitation at a cost of $181,000. These changes did not change the total budgeted amounts in, in any of these funds. Many items included in the CIP will be funded with available cash resources, while other larger projects will require the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation or revenue bonds. Although it is not possible to know the financing terms of these instruments at this time, staff will work closely with bond counsel and our municipal advisors to ensure issuances are structured in accordance with state and federal laws, as well as city and Salina policies. All cash-funded projects exceeding $20,000 and any debt issuance will be presented to the City Commission for approval prior to expenditure commitment or debt obligation. You have three options, one, to approve Resolution 18-7643 as presented, approve Resolution 18-7643 with your amendments, or do not approve 18-7643, giving staff further direction. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Questions for Ms. Pack?
Just, one, it's sort of generated after our study session this afternoon on, I guess yous don't have page numbers, but under Buildings and Facilities for 2019, is the East Crawford Drainage Improvement, the drainage issue we were discussing?
No, I thought it was, and I think Mr. Schreck had kind of corrected me in, in saying that that's a, that's the whole parking lot issue, how that flows down there, and that was going to kind of divert that water there. So it does not address the particular field, is that correct?
That intended improvement is a curb running north and south on the east side of the runway, to keep water from sheet-flowing off of the runway and into the dog park and into the different facilities. So it's more just kind of the length of that runway than it is addressing the site-specific issues at Dean Evans.
Okay. Thank you. Have a question.
I just had a quick question in terms of like the 2019 funding summary that's on Page 6. I understand that the sales tax fund cash, that's, we're going to come up with that cash out of pocket. We also have sales tax debt financed, but I didn't know if we would have some, any payments anticipated in 2019 on that debt service that would increase our sales tax cash commitment? cash commitment, if that makes sense. I could probably draw.
We have included in our budget for the sales tax, we have included the debt service payments, and I'm looking for this because you pre-warned me that you were going to ask me this question, and I have it in the stack somewhere. We have included in their debt service projects for any projects that we've approved on the CIP coming out of sales tax going forward. For example, the river renewal, the street scape. And if I find my sheet, I'll tell you. So yes, we have included those in the, oh, found it. We have included those in there, in our budgeted numbers, but that helps.
I'm sure it does. I just need to find the right, the right sheet. As you know, I was challenged.
No, I didn't bring the right sheet either, so.
Okay. Well, yeah, just in terms of looking through the body of the document, it was just on, yeah, I just noted that like the sales tax fund cash was 4.38, and the sales tax debt financed in 2019 is 2.275. And I just wondered if any of that 2.275 debt that was financed, if that, you know, the payments that we would have to make would be added on top of the poor 4.38 of cash projects?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so what we've allocated is, we've allocated the $500,000 a year for the parks, the $50,000 hike bike, and the, some of those other cash projects that we've allocated from sales tax. Those are separate from anything that we've assumed is going to be debt financed and paid through, through sales tax. So the police training range, like I said, street scape, we've, we've budgeted those in the sales tax fund when those debt services do become due, or they begin.
Okay. So just because these are listed in 2019 doesn't mean that there's going to be any debt service payments?
Correct.
Made on this. All right, I am totally with you now. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
In most cases, we'll have temporary notes issued on those in 2019, so we'll have some interest cost. But when, and we won't, we don't typically bond those until the project's completed, so we wouldn't have the final debt project, or debt service payments until we actually bond those. But we would have, we would have budgeted for both of those scenarios.
Gotcha, gotcha. And yeah, then to the question that I had asked that, you know, if it's not too short of timeline, if you could speak to it this afternoon, is how we're doing sales tax-wise historically, just like our year-to-date, and if that looks pretty consistent with what we've seen over the last couple of years.
That's the, that's the sheet I brought. So what we've been seeing is, over the past two years, we've been running around 2% increases, and what we're tracking is, what are we doing today compared to what we were doing at this time last year? And in November, we were up 1.71% in November, and then the months prior to that, throughout the year, we've run anywhere from 1.6 all the way up to 3.1% higher. So as, on average, we're, we're looking at probably close to 2, 2 and 1/2% for the year. But this is what we've collected in the year. We've collected to date a little over 13 and 1/2 million dollars in sales tax, and at this time last year, we had collected about 13.3 million. So.
That is very reassuring. I mean, and I think we talked about that before in terms of the burden that we're putting on this, on our sales tax, and, you know, just getting updates to confirm that we're, you know, where, where we want to be on those. So that's, that's the only question I had from Ms. Pack.
Where, where does that $1.5 million fall out for the watering system out at the golf course that we're looking at? Where that's going to fall to?
That'll actually come out of tack, property tax. That's on the CIP.
But that's not in here.
It, it's on the CIP. It's anticipated that it'll go to, that'll happen in 2019, so we wouldn't bond it till the end of 2019. It's on Page Three, or Two, whichever version you have.
Mine says Four.
Under the 2019 projects.
Okay.
It's the second page of the 2019 projects, under property tax projects. We have $1.5 million for the irrigation replacement at the golf course. Is that the one you're speaking of?
That's it.
Yes. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Other questions? We'll open up to the public for comment. Anybody like to address this item?
I was just wondering if our future, you know, we don't have a plan in place right now. We're kind of in limbo for, for a recycling program for our town, a modern system, whatever we're going to do. And I was just wondering, as far as, you know, the CIP, are we planning for that, or is there any savings being done so that when the time comes? Because we mentioned about, you know, kind of, if I was hearing right, working ahead on the water systems. And I'm wondering, because, you know, we're talking about the expense of new trucks, excuse me, new carts, and things like that, and our unknown, you know, what we're going to be doing, is there some savings program being done so that we'll be ready to do that in the future, in the near future?
In response to that, we operate the sanitation function as an enterprise fund, so that plan stands alone, independent of property taxes and sales taxes, and the short answer is yes. I mean, the, the conversation we've been having for quite some time now is in anticipation of implementing curbside recycling and having the rates in place, as well as kind of the broader planning that goes with that. So everything was tracking to place the order for fully automated trucks and the carts that, that would correspond with that in 2019, until we took a pause here recently because of concerns about changes in the recycling market and whether we'd be able to carry that plan forward. So I guess the short answer is, the sanitation function stands alone, and the planning that we've been doing for curbside, full, community-wide curbside recycling is taking into account the cost and how to pay for it.
And there, I will just add that, that as in any enterprise fund, or most of them, there is some reserve balance in those funds. And so we do have a small reserve, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but for that fund as well. So from saving, prior savings or revenues that went, came in over what we anticipated, so.
John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. Just one thing on revenues. Am I to understand that, did I hear right, that our sales tax revenues are somewhere in the area of 2 and 1/2% year, year-to-date over last year?
Yes, on average.
Okay, and we did not, and they ranged from 1.6 to?
6 to 1.7.
Right, so we never, we didn't have any months where we were, where we were behind this time last year?
No.
Okay. One question about the North Ninth Street, it's, or I'm sorry, North Broadway? Is it supposed to be South Broadway from, or, from Crawford to Ash? Is that a typo? Or are we doing something on North Broadway?
It's a Walnut.
North Ninth Street.
2019.
North Broadway enhancement.
Yeah, North Broadway enhancement project. North Broadway.
That's another one. I didn't think we had anything in there for that.
Is that, is that a typo?
It should say South Broadway.
And it's all the way, it's all the way from Crawford to?
Ash.
Okay, and it's just projects within the right-of-way?
Yeah, we have a study session coming shortly in terms of the community meetings we've had, the conversations we've had about improvements to that corridor. This is an anticipation of that.
Okay, so we haven't seen what that final recommendation is.
There's been a community meeting where they've kind of presented their plan and got feedback, but the final recommendation is scheduled for an upcoming study session shortly.
Okay, so the $3 million is based on a final?
Yeah, and we're trying to provide funding to make the final decision.
So is it a done deal? I mean, is it worth the public showing up to a meeting? I mean, is, is the final recommendation? I guess what I'm getting at is, is the final recommendation, the $3 million plan, or could a final recommendation be less or more than?
The final recommendation could be do nothing. We're, we're just trying to prepare for what we anticipate to be a recommendation to an improvement to that corridor. This is a budget item, and then we'll take the budget, and we'll compare it to the recommended plan and the costs associated with that plan. And as Debbie mentioned, any expenditure in excess of $20,000 will come back to the governing body for action. We're just trying to have a identified budget line at it.
And the funding source for that North Broadway?
The study itself?
No, the, the construction.
Property tax.
Property tax, so looking at a property tax increase to do the Broadway corridor. Okay.
No. We're trying to account for this in our annual expenditures, is, we have some flexibility in our property tax budget, so I'm not prepared to say that this equates to a property tax increase.
And the, in the sub-CIP, is, is the building portion of that sub-CIP, is that, are we looking at doing anything? Does that include projects at, say, like, community theater, and if we need money to fix cracks in the fieldhouse floor, or anything like that?
Does this, I don't, I don't want to create a false perception that we budgeted for those improvements, but if those type of improvements come along, yes, we have to fund them in the same manner.
That, that's in that one.
And, and just to be clear, I mean, the City Commission had a conversation about our property tax levy as it relates to the general fund budget overall, so, you know, it, it all goes together, but I don't want to create a one-for-one relationship that, that any individual project means an additional property tax increase at this time.
Right. And then, right, and, and just a quick question about the back-to-the-water, forced-water main replacement. That typically came out of the utility fees. Are we looking, do any of you consider that to be of an importance enough to come out of something other than, I mean, if we're not going to do it there, are you willing to raise property taxes to do that? Because as you know, if you build ball fields, that'll come out of the property tax, and we're going to do that before we do water lines. Is there any priority placed on certain things in your budget that if we took the water mains out, is there anything in there that you can get the water, get some water main replacement in there? We did it several years ago when it came to streets. We did it to, sorry, I hit an emergency dial on my phone for some reason. As you recall, you, you know what I'm talking about when we, the thing with the health center, we ended up raising taxes to fix more streets and put more money in a general fund. Is there any scenario by which you guys would support something to do that with fixing some of our deteriorating, deteriorating infrastructure? Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Is there any, any comments, ma'am?
I don't have any for you. The other commissioners can comment if they would like.
Obviously, I've shared my concern about reducing the amount of money that we're spending on our water mains. I don't know that I had tied that to any particular thing here that could be eliminated. However, I did have a question, and Commissioner, former Commissioner Blanchard asked it, about the North Broadway enhancement project, because I saw that it showed up on both 2019 and 2020, unless one of those is like, you know, it's, we, we plan for it in one year and then issue the debt in another. And kind of a corollary to that is that I see that in the capital improvement projects, we continue to list the $4 million in waterline improvements, and if that's not something we're going to do, I think that, you know, we, we need to remove it from the capital improvement project so that it accurately reflects what we're going to be doing.
That's true. Yeah, I, well, I see you're, what you're referring to in the reference of the water main, waterline improvements, and I would agree with you. We've, the intention, as we previously discussed in study session, is $2 million annually rather than the four.
And also, you're correct that in, on the South Broadway enhancements, the 2019 cost is $250,000, so to me, that's the design phrase, and then in 2020, there's an additional price. But I will change the, starting in 2021, that, that whole approach of the $2 million.
I'm sorry, that is a good point. The, these numbers are for 2019, and we're talking about dialing that back in 2021.
21, mhm. Well, those are out in here also.
So to correctly reflect it, the $2 million number needs to be out at 2021, which, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but it looks like we have $4 million is there, there as well. So the correction would be to show $2 million of waterline improvements from 2021 forward.
Gotcha, gotcha. And back to Mr. Blanchard's question, I don't know what I would eliminate in favor of getting more miles of waterline per year addressed. However, I did go shopping with $3.25 million of Broadway enhancements, and came up with some projects for further review that seemed pretty important to me, including fire station alerting system, HVAC for the Smoky Hill Museum, some levee work, and Dry Creek Bank stabilization. And I certainly saw a lot of uses for the, the $3.25.
Any others like to comment on this item?
Patrick Harrington. Question, is the golf course an enterprise of the cities?
It is.
Yes. So you're going to improve, I'm sorry to interrupt you, you'll improve the water capacity or the water infrastructure there? Is that cost, should that cost not be placed on people that use the enterprise, the golf fees? I, I don't think I want to pay for that. I don't golf. A small portion of the city of Salina does, and it's okay, I've played golf before. I chose parachuting was more up my alley of things that I wanted to, to do. But I, I don't think it's fair to charge other folks in the city for golf improvements. It should be borne by the people that use that resource.
And as a clarification, it's not increasing water capacity, it's replacing the existing irrigation system.
Existing.
But that doesn't change your point, and I realize that.
Exactly, yeah.
And so the golf course is, has a goal of being self-supporting, but it has a history of slight subsidy on an annual basis. But there was a conversation about, the operation of that is never going to be profitable to the level to fund the irrigation system, so part of the City Commission's deliberations were, that, that's an investment that's already been made, and if we don't repair the irrigation system, we may lose the investment we already have. But to your point, that, that is a priority, priority decision for the governing body to make, and we're carrying that forward.
So what we would lose, what we would lose is grass that takes a lot of water consumption to keep alive so that a few people can go golf. So I, can you vote for this?
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? We'll bring it up, back up here for discussion. Or motion.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve Resolution Number 18-7643, adopting the 2019 to 23 capital improvement program.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
Just, I have one more question. A vote and the affirmative for this, Mr. Schregg. Does that attach kind of like a pre-approval or a pre-certification to the Broadway street enhancements? Because sometimes I feel like we kind of get in a circular argue, or not argument, discussion. You know, in six months, if we come back, is it going to be presented as the City Commission approved the Broadway enhancements? So staff has been proceeding on that assumption, and then we have a commitment bias, and we're not able to say, timeout, we were approving this as a whole and not one specific item, you know, not calling out one specific item.
I was making myself a note to kind of raise a similar question in other business, and about kind of this procedural question, but in direct answer to your question, the 2019 budget that is being the 2019 budget that is being approved is $250,000 of 2019 cost associated with the South Broadway enhancement project. And so that presumption is that we would go forward and contract for, we'd bring back the proposed design, and we'd be in a position to then contract for construction design of, of whatever's agreed to. So while it wouldn't commit you to, you know, the full $3 million project, nor would it even commit you to the $250,000 worth of consultant fees, the next time it would come back to you would probably be, have been staffed through to the point of having RFPs or RFQs for consultants and gone through that entire process to bring you the consultant to take it to the next step of design. So, well, I completely understand your decision bias concern. In all honesty, no, it's not a final decision, but if you're, as a body, you're already, you know, concerned enough that you don't want to go for this project, then I, you know, I guess we cancel the, the report out of the public meeting, and we take it off this budget, and, and staff doesn't proceed. And so, just, just so we're clear, and there'll be quite a bit of staff time, there'll be quite a bit of process going forward based on the decision you make tonight. And not necessarily committed expense, but more process.
But, yeah, but, but, but a, but a staff commitment. So if, you know, if we revisit this in three or four months, we haven't spent the 250,000 or whatever it is allotted for 2019, but we will have spent hundreds of hours of staff time staffing it through to getting it to the point for us to approve or not the $250,000 expense. And depending upon each of our individual natures, you know, whether or not we're, we're, we're okay or not with, you know, proceeding at that point.
No, I'd, I'd say that's a correct assessment. And diving a little bit into what I was going to bring up in other business, we, it seems like we have this issue coming up here in quite a bit in a short amount of time. And each, each example I can think of is in a little bit different situation. And, you know, whether you pick the overhead structures for the downtown, I mean, we, the authorization that was in place was to contract for construction of those. So we were, we were further in the process there than here. The item that's going to be before, well, you kind of touched on rates, but you're going to touch it again tonight, is the South Water Plant. And not only are we talking in concept there, we've, we've contracted for design and acquisition of property and acquisition of water rights. Not to say that you, as a body, couldn't say, put all that on hold, but we were quite a ways into that. Recycling, I wouldn't say we have an expenditure, but we recently had conversation about where we were headed with that in study session, and then we bring it up for ratification, and we kind of got confused on that item. So the thing I intended to bring up in other businesses is whether we are staffing through items to your satisfaction, but everyone's a little different. But as it relates to this particular project, no, you, you are not authorizing spending 250,000. That would take another action, but you are authorizing proceeding quite a ways further down that path.
I guess a good example would be the highway signs welcoming people to Salinas. They've been on the CIP, where we're on the CIP for several years, but each year got bumped. So it's, it's, this, this paper's as good as it could be until our next meeting.
Certainly, we can change our minds, and it's always the majority of the commission that decides.
Any more discussion? Could we have action on this item?
Call the question.
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, a motion in a second. I have forgotten. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That item passes four to one. 7.4.
Item 7.4, first reading ordinance number 18-10970, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the city of Salina, Kansas and the state of Kansas to finance the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant.
I'm going to try to glue this back together from the previous discussion, but I, I think I will start out by saying, basically, we've been working on this for over 10 years, and we've expended a lot of time and dollars and reports to get to where we are. And I, I could go through the long list of items here, but I would guess a good share of you are used to what we did unless you choose for me to present that for the public to hear. So I'll ask that question. Otherwise, we've talked briefly, and most importantly, we started back from the drought in 2006. The perfect storm occurred, low precipitation, very hot, high demands for the city and the irrigators, and basically the river went dry. So, so we know that can happen, and we've seen it about every six years since then where we've had some consideration of drought. So based on that, we started down the path of what can we do to improve that in the future and try to put all the right pieces together to carry us into the future. And I mentioned, it takes a big crystal ball with all of these things to get them all balanced, but we talked earlier about the lead and copper. What, what we tried to do in my group is to think ahead. We talked about the service lines. That's not a requirement of us to have done that work. We did that to be ahead of the game, proactive, and determine where those service lines were. And that's, that's really what we tried to do with our work, is to think ahead how we can best provide a, a really reliable and sustainable water supply for a community. And I've reviewed this plan more than one time with KDHE. We've been identified as a drought vulnerable community since 2006. That's not something that I personally am proud of in my position. I'd like to get past that, so some of these things are helping us there. And really, a lot of it had to do with being drought vulnerable was our surface water. It, it, it can go away, and we know that to be true now. We've seen it. And our, our well field is something we work on regularly. You see dollars in there for replacing pumps with 15 pumps and two standbys. You can be doing something about every year to those pumps to stay ahead of the game. So when I give drought numbers, that's assuming all our wells are working. And that doesn't pan out to be true. We have to clean the wells on a regular basis. So I just made a lot of the best assumptions we can about what we can really get out of our downtown well field. And, and for me, it's trying to really ensure that we have a reliable system. It's sustainable. We have some redundancy, but most of all, it's about public health for our community and being able to provide them the water they really deserve. And in the conditions, if everything pans out, if we never need the assurance district and we never have another drought, then I, I won't look very good. But knowing that we're going to have another drought and some other conditions, I got a 50/50 chance of making the right decisions here to move forward. And, and truly, we haven't done this lightly. We've spent many meetings. In fact, today, we're here about the loan agreement, which basically was authorized in November of 2017 to, to submit an application to KDHE for a loan, which they've done their due diligence, went through their process, evaluated our rate study, evaluated our needs, and approved the loan for us. And they have executed their portion of it and sent it back to us. We've talked about lime softening and RO plants. We've went back and looked at the raw water supply study and, and what does that mean for the South Well Field in May? We purchased the property in July of 2018, which was, took us a little bit of time and somewhat painful for some of us, but we got that accomplished. And in November 26th, a couple of weeks ago, we did a study session about the project and, and where we're headed, you know, to execute the loan and to execute a, a final design contract. And in your report, I kind of summarized to date, we've spent about 2.8 million to get to the point where we're at. And, and that, that equates into a lot of man-hours if you, you decipher that from city staff and from our consultants. So we've worked really hard to get to this point. And again, it's totally, I'm going to wrap on down to finish up on the loan. We asked for a loan amount of 32 million. Our budget that we presented on November 26th was 32,600. That included some owner-controlled contingency for something that might come up of about 250,000. Whether that happens or not is still to be seen. And also, the loan origination fee is in there. So our final cost, we'll have the option to amend the loan or to pay the balance from our water and wastewater reserve account. That's kind of where we stand with that. The loan is, is a term of 20 years, which is typically what we use for these type of projects. Our current interest rate's 2.33%. Our total yearly payment, which we make twice, two payments in a year, is a little over $2 million. And I believe we'll begin to pay that in probably August of 2020, based on schedule where we're at today. Let's see. The loan agreement pledges revenues of the utility for repayment. However, that pledge is subordinate to pledges on other revenue obligations of the city. There is a note in there that if, for some reason, we do not make our loan payment, the loan provides that we levy taxes without limitation as to the rate or amount upon tangible property, which is what we've seen in the other loans we just did about two, three weeks, two or three weeks ago. So very similar there. KDHE requires an ordinance, which is attached, and then the loan agreement, including exhibits A through J. They must all be submitted to KDHE. I almost don't even want to talk about physical note, because we've kind of, Debbie has really brought that out and covered it about three different ways today. But just going back, I looked quickly, the South Well Field and Water Treatment Plant's been included in, in the capital improvement plan in 2015, and we've included it in our rates with the hope of being able to kind of level this out and be able to do all of the projects that we have in mind. So it's, it's been on my list to do for some time now, and we've worked diligently to do that. I think it fits in with our conformance plan that we want to provide the highest quality of service for our community. And I don't think there's anything much more, more valuable than potable water that's available when you need it. So I believe strongly in that. From the commission action, we've allowed you two options. One would be to adopt ordinance number 18-1097 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas. Or option two is to not adopt ordinance, ordinance 18-10970 and give staff further direction. Staff recommends option one. And I would be glad to answer any questions you might have. I, I may have went through that too quickly, but it was kind of hard to sort out from what we talked about to what I need to cover. So I'd be glad to take the shot in any question you have.
Martha, if I remember right, this works kind of like a construction loan, where you don't have to draw the full 32 million, you just draw it as needed?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Therefore, we're only paying interest as we draw the funds?
What we actually do is it's, truly, you don't, they don't allow you the 32 million. We have to expend the, the dollars, and then we request reimbursement, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions?
I just have a question. I don't know if, it's probably from Mr. Bangston. We have purchased the water treatment plant site, correct?
That is correct.
The purchase has been completed, and that's not contingent upon anything, the, the purchase of the land and any water rights that we acquired through that purchase is not contingent upon the construction of a water plant on that site, or is it?
You are correct that it is not contingent upon construction of the plant on the site. The, that was the articulated justification for the eminent domain proceeding that was necessary in order to acquire the, the only other point I was going to make, the, as you might recall, there are some proceedings, yet more of an allocation proceeding with the Division of Water Resources as to the allocation of the water right within the area that the water relate, water right relates to. But Ms. Tasker, in her work, has communicated with the Division of Water Resources, and we are confident in what that allocation will be. It's just a matter of that needing to be addressed administratively through their processes.
Thank you, Ms. Tasker, very much. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item?
Norman, Man, Salina, Kansas. All night long, all I've heard is a bunch of speculations and projections. That's like playing the stock market. Sell the rumors, buy the facts. Why don't you get your money in your pocket first before you start spending it? And to address the water rights issues, this is being discussed all over the United States, especially the Western U.S. These water rights are being tied up for 10 years, because who really owns them? The courts are going back to the 1830s, the 1820s, 1803. Who owns these water rights? We don't. There are dams that are being ordered to take them out to comply with contracts, documents that were made in the 1800s, 18030s. The Native Americans are saying, hey, wait a minute. This is ours. This is happening in the Navajo Nation out in Arizona. They're calling in their water rights. So you better be careful, I would suggest, and make sure that you have absolute, a clear title to these water rights. Because I'm watching this with another woman out in Colorado, and she sends me this operation, information. You don't have a clear title to these water rights. So I would do a little more looking and look back into the documents, see who really owns these water rights.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle.
John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. As you can tell, this water plant's kind of important to me. I think it's important that we get it right. Martha referenced on several occasions in the, the raw water study, and I don't remember exactly what the date on that raw water study. Was it 2008 or 10 or? But, but I do know it was, I do recall from having it out several times, it was over 300 pages long.
Yes, it was authorized to begin the work in March of 2008, and, and then in February of 2010, the five-phase project was approved.
Right. And, thank you. And something to consider on that raw water study, and it kind of goes in line with our housing study that we did. We take and we look at, at years, they projected a 0.5% raise in the population, too. And I think it was certainly appropriate at the time that that study was underway to look at kind of what is happening at the time in terms of the drought, in terms of growth, in terms of some of the other things that were going on. A tornado was mentioned, I can't, I don't remember exactly which one that was. But, you know, Martha mentioned that if it turns out that we don't need these things, then it makes her look wrong. I don't agree with you, if, because you're dealing with what you have to, from an engineer's perspective, on the facts at that time. And when she mentions that it's a $2.8 million commitment, thus, thus far, I think that's what we're talking about here when we talk about commitment bias. It's when we talk about sunk costs, and at what point do you say, stop, delay, move forward? I'm simply here to encourage you, because you're not going to stop it, is to delay it, okay? Mr. Mantle mentioned the speculation aspect of this. And we seem to have an awful lot of if we build it, they will come mentality. And that's what a 5% or a half a percent, a 0.5% annual growth rate is. It's a, if we build, you know, they're going to come. Well, we don't, that's not, we've been Well, we don't, that's not what we've been experiencing recently. They're not coming. They're leaving, okay? We've lost, we've lost 0.18% over the last six years, I think it was. Since 2010, we've lost over 700, nearly 800 residents. We're losing population. I would ask you to say, let's build it as they come, instead of build it and they will come. Let's build it as they come. I would like to know one thing, because just in reference to the raw water study, just for instance, it had a lot of different components to them. Two of the components that we've talked about today are the downtown well fields and the water treatment facility and well fields on the south end. I think at that time, it wasn't really that close to 32 million. That price has gone up considerably. So the cost has gone up considerably on the south well fields and treatment facility, while we've actually remediated some of those downtown wells and done some of the things in that raw water study that contemplated, how do we get more water? So if, I'm sure that you've all read that raw water study, but the nodding of heads several times that you're familiar with it, and I would just suggest that if it's possible, don't build it right away. Let's build it when we need it, and let's take care of what we have. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission? Bring it back up here for further discussion? Or a motion?
Mayor Ryan, I move we adopt ordinance number 18-10970 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the State of Kansas.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion will pass four to one. Seven point five. Proceedings relating to the city manager selection and hiring, and the item A is matters relating to the selection process. Before we go into executive session, there's been conversation about how we would handle the offering of candidates to the public. So if you'll give us an update, and maybe we can have a discussion about how that can take place.
I'm going to look to Mr. Bangston just to make sure in terms of guidance on information disclosed here versus what needs to happen in executive session.
Certainly. As maybe you could tell from the agenda item, and in terms of available information and in terms of identification of what seemed to be appropriate motions for any executive sessions you might choose to have, that was our best effort in that regard. This conversation is obviously yours. Having completed the interviews that were conducted on Thursday, it was my generally understanding from speaking with the mayor and with Mr. Davis, your consultant, that you, in terms of advancing the process through the end of the process and the potential for a public component, I think how, when, how, betel might occur is something that you would want to talk about, where it should occur, where it would best occur, the format in which it would best occur. Those are the types of things that hopefully you can outline this evening. The order of your discussion is entirely up to you as well in terms of the public components and the executive session component. The first executive session component would be, that I listed, was if there were any other items to be discussed that needed to be discussed confidentially out of regard for the, any privacy interests of the candidates. And it was my understanding that was the extent of any conversation that might occur as to candidates for today's purposes. And that, again, more this matter of where you want to go process-wise. The, and then I have, depending on that, want to talk with you about what meetings would need to be called, what would occur in a meeting context, what would occur outside of a meeting context. So all of the above, and I think if we can just take-
My comment might have been getting the cart before the horse a little bit, but maybe as commission, we need to, I thought we could discuss the generalities of that public component, but possibly we need to go into executive session to, just for the, all the commissioners should hear their report that I've received from Mr. Davis, and then we might just report those out.
That would certainly be fine, I think, however you all wish to proceed. I assume it would be a pretty fairly brief conversation.
Fairly brief, I think, yeah.
What do you need? 10 minutes? 15?
We've never done anything in 10 minutes.
Okay. Let's do this. Mayor Ryan, I move the city commission recessed in the executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters relating to specific candidates for the position of city manager based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:45.
Could I request that the executive session start at 6:32 to give us two minutes? Let's add, make it five.
Make it five.
Okay, we start at 6:35.
Okay. Executive session will start at 6:35. We will return at 6:50 in this room.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be back in 20.